So next year, you don't have a revenue source.
Lord, help us to love mercy, to just and walk calmly before the in Jesus' name, amen.
Stand, salute, pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call to determine the floor.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. James Green?
Here.
Mr. Derrick Green?
Present.
Mr. Harrow?
Here.
Present.
Thank you.
This is a meeting call discussion and you will notice that you have an invitation for the unveiling of the Dr. Maple John Margaret to take place on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven thirty to two P M. So I'm looking forward to that event now. And that's the only announcement that I'm going to give unless there are some announcements from council members. Okay. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda? No comments? Item number five, discussion, contracts and reimbursement documents that are causing council to amend the city of the actual budget.
We all know we don't have any paperwork.
What I had I gave to Mr. Bradford and I'm still pulling contracts.
Well, what you gave me was some invoices and we want to discuss them weekend. But I I have some, I think this is what I got changed, I think it's three, Jake, me and him now. Um, I didn't get a chance to make a copy up for everybody, but.
So how we gonna discuss it?
I guess I guess how we gonna discuss is. That's the question. They hadn't had a chance to even look at them or might should have been in the package if it was on the agenda, but that's, you know. It's not here, it's not here now.
Um, Ms. Goldman, how many pages did you run?
It's over one hundred there. Now, I can't get running, go make the copies and then.
Yeah, we you can. I think we just need the the things that are causing us to amend the budget. That's it.
Also, also too, we we amended the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, right? Because.
We are, but that's that's gonna be Thursday.
Uh, I I that's what I'm saying, that's what we amended.
Yes, sir.
So the proposed budget twenty-three, twenty-four, are they constant changes every time we get this?
No, the reason why that's change is that, uh, y'all asked me to go back and figure everybody getting two, two dollars.
So so this this is like.
That's the two dollars y'all wanted to look at.
Okay, what about the other changes that we proposed? I know the audit.
There is, they're in that budget there.
See, this is.
You'll see in the red, what, um.
Well, no, I I made a a statement requesting that we not pay extra twenty thousand dollars for the audit expense, but the numbers are still the same. It hadn't changed.
I know the one that, um, I remember the one that you mentioned was the, um, you wanted to add sixteen thousand paying Mr. Casey.
Yeah, I know.
So I added that, that's the silver surface line.
Okay.
I added that. And then one of the things that y'all had mentioned was the other legal fees. Looking back, one of the things that made us kind of go over was a fifteen thousand dollar. That was where we paid North Delta to do the reapportion to get ready to do our redistricting. That was paid out. That's not a thing that we get every year. That's, I don't know how often they do it. Every six this year, maybe that's when they do it. So we won't have that fee, so I took that off of there. And then also we we cut back and then somebody mentioned, uh, invoices for financial, but we didn't have any expenses for that for this past year.
For what?
Because we didn't do any bond work or nothing.
For financial.
So so I didn't have any invoices. We didn't pay anybody for that.
Well, the audit expense, I said, um, we didn't need to pay sixty-five thousand dollars. We needed to pay the original amount of forty-five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars.
You can see the invoices that, uh, while that's there, the audit.
She did something different this year?
Yes, they got a lot more than our pressure. Our audit's got a lot, doing a lot more now.
But we not even compliant?
We're not.
Well, and and that really ain't her fault. That's my fault.
Okay, I I still think there's too much, okay.
Can I speak on the, uh, I don't, I don't know who fault, I will put fault, but the job is not done. And I don't think anybody should be.
That audit there was for the the previous audit for twenty.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right, it's not done.
Well, but that was there was the twenty-one. What took us long on that was the one for twenty-one. We did not finish the twenty-twenty-one budget until December of twenty twenty-two, maybe the thirty-first of December twenty-two.
Okay, well, uh, I I just think.
She's not billed anything for twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, but I'm thinking that's that's still quite a bit, twenty thousand dollars in that area. I think we did, and and did you take out the miscellaneous fifty thousand dollars? I haven't had a chance to really look at this.
Did I take out fifteen thousand?
We had a last budget, we had fifty thousand dollar miscellaneous.
Well, that's a catch, y'all, but if you want me to tell you what it's for, I'll look that up for you.
No, no, I'm gonna look what it's for. I want, is it still in here?
Well, yes, sir, because you you really have some things that don't fit in a specific category.
Okay, I'm I'm looking for because I don't see a fifty thousand dollars we can rent tractors and cut the dr- grass. Uh, uh, do it quite a bit in our community, you know, we have tractors down, we have, I I just can't see putting, putting in the budget. That's like a waste to me, fifty say, okay, we gonna put fifty thousand dollars here for miscellaneous and and, uh, we don't have enough money for this. Uh, I can definitely appreciate the raise for the employees for sure. Uh, but the fifty thousand dollars and the twenty thousand dollars increase for the audit, uh, I I I just can't see that being that way and we not in compliance. We we're trying to get in compliance, but we can go forward and 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 move forward, but just keep putting additional stuff in, like the fifty thousand dollars, like, I'm sure I seen a couple of other things. You said the sheriff department, they're not in this budget, is that correct?
They're not gonna be in this budget.
In this budget, right. Then they not, and they not admitting to the police department. I mean.
Yes, sir, we gotta pay them out there. They're paying out the salary.
Okay, but.
The shift.
Other word, what what shows in the police, um, our police department salary rate include the sheriff department, does that understand?
It will because because what, if you're, if you're not up to your twenty-five million, what are you gonna do until you get it? You're just gonna work with the men you got? Is that what y'all wanna do?
I would like to work with the men we got and the sheriff department do their due diligence and and serve the city government as they required to us, Miss Miss Palady here in Morehouse Fair. We'll, I think they would if we backed off. I can't see the sheriff department.
You don't, you don't wanna pay them?
No, 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 I just want them to keep their own main. They already paid tax dollars, baby. I prepared taxes. I want them to go ahead and maintain what they can, what the best they can, you know, because they got an obligation and and for the city limit, they will outside the city limit, because they 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 get city taxes. And they go, we we do not want the sheriff department being in his twenty, twenty-four budget at all. I think it's a violation already we did in the past, but I'm not looking at the past, I'm looking for the future. I think that the sheriff department should stand down and, you know, and we don't put anything in the budget for the sheriff department. And then we take, we, again, we could take that money, again, we can use it in other areas. And and I think you got, I don't know how much you got written in our fund, but I know they got almost quarter million dollars or more in the last year. But we could take that money and 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 spread it out among other things that we need for the city operation. Again, we don't have tractors, we don't have to go into contract, I'm tired of getting complaint calling about the grass, this, I'm sure the mayor come to, uh, the grass and this not cut, uh, that, uh, we don't have enough employees and 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 public work, we don't have enough employees. Probably in your office, the cemetery, the Accrone, I think we can use that money in better area, and I hope that the sheriff department understand. You know, and 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 don't go, don't go out of the way. If the chief calling, I'm sure they coming. And when the office, they gonna, they gonna do a backup. If they need them, they'll call. And and we can go ahead and with the, with the increase that we have in here for hiring, hoping that we can land two or three more officers in the next third day. I think some of them here, some of them is already qualified, been through the train, everything, just got a couple update. They're willing to work for batches if we get our our, uh, pay raise up. And I think we're doing that in this budget, if I'm understanding that. And, uh, I think we'll be able to get through, that's the sheriff to bear with us.
Mr. Green? Mr. James Green?
Oh, we had kind of resolved that issue. Then we take it, then we take the, uh, item out from the sheriff department and just broke it down, police department.
We, we did.
With shifts, but you still include the sheriff.
It was, it was the shifts. It was, what, what we did was we divided into five shifts. Right now, we're working two shifts. So right now, two shifts is being suspended by the city's employees, where the sheriff department works the other two shifts.
But but still.
We're budgeting out of that. We don't have a line item that says Morehouse Fair's share petroleum.
Hence, hence, let me, I mean, hence, doing nothing different. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut you in because I want to understand. She did nothing different by us previous budget, budgeting for thirty-one slots and paying paying the sheriff departments. Nothing been done different. Also too, it's two things that we supposed to be doing. We supposed to be amending the twenty-two, twenty-three budget and also adopting the budgets for the twenty-three, twenty-four, which when you put them together, this one is causing some confusion. So we asking right now, we asking, because since we have to amend the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we need to know what we amended, because every time you give us these right here, Miss Andrew, the number's different.
Okay, I, to Thursday or when you get your package tomorrow, they will be separated. There'll be a separated.
Language, specifically, what I line items are you amending?
That's right.
Because some either, either we, either we underspend or overspend, either are we amended that that particular line item. So it's, it's, what we can't do is accept the amend budget just because you say accept the amend budget. We need to know what we are amending. So hence why we need those documentation or resolution, however you prefer. But then we discuss the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, because when we hear talking about what we amended and what we adopting, because now the people even confused, because they think the twenty-three, twenty-four budget already been adopted, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget already been adopted. We just amending that one. What we gotta do now is adopt the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Yeah.
And also, Miss.
So this this form here is like we've done for years since the legislature audit requires it to do it. I'm just separating it because that's what y'all want me to do.
What, what?
This form here is the same form we've done every year.
And and this.
Just doing different.
This, even even this form will support what we are amending, because if if the numbers are accurate, because we, again, we gonna know which, I'm gonna bring each, each one of those, these budgets that I have.
I have.
And I'm gonna prepare them all together, because I, because because when the numbers keep on, we we thirteen million here, we fourteen million here, we fifteen million here, we don't know what number we are, which the, which one is the correct, accurate number?
The one that you're gonna get is right here, except it's gonna be separated. You don't have one year and one resolution where you're amended.
Okay.
And one for the current year we're in that.
And in their resolution, it don't have a particular line item.
It'll have everything.
Okay.
I understand. Mr.
It'll have a, it'll have a message from the mayor telling you what we're doing.
Okay. Mr. James Green?
Like what the council is saying, three weeks ago, you, four weeks ago, it was one point seven deficit. Week after that, it was four hundred thousand dollars deficit. So what he's saying is the budget keep changing. You keep going, you went from one point seven to four hundred thousand, what he's, I, I understand what you're doing, but he's saying it's not, it's a different budget. Whenever the numbers change, it's a different deal. Last week it was different, this week is different, week before it was different.
Well, the reason for this week and the last week was because y'all asked me to do two dollars. That changed every department's budget.
It don't change the, listen, it don't change what we amended. The the two dollars only gonna change the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, the only thing amended from this one, the last one, was that the, the, uh, and I put it red, what changed it. It's in red bold what I changed.
See, that's why I was saying, this was the confusion, it's like the, the, the two dollar raises don't have anything to do with what we amended. It only have what we, what we supposedly are, hopefully adopt.
I understand.
Uh, Mrs. Tapp?
Um, we, it was a request for these contracts and the information we needed in order to discuss it, we don't have it. So I just need to know why we don't have it and do we need to escalate this and try to subpoena the records, because that's what's next, contracts.
Uh, we were definitely, I'm shorthanded and I stopped to do this and then I stopped to do all that that Mr. Bradford said. I can't do, I'm, I'm already working seven days a week.
We don't need to work today. We need to look at getting you some help.
Well, and we're trying to do that.
We don't want you overworked.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we need to try to get you some help. Are we advertising for any help?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Sorry, I don't see.
But but when I have councilman that says I need it right now and I'm trying to do it, and next week I got payroll. So, you know, I'm doing all I can do.
Okay, so we can't.
But I will, I'll try to get some people tomorrow to work on it. Because I do have employees that has vacation and when they ask in advance, I don't wanna tell them, no, they can't go it, do it.
I definitely thought the purpose of today was introduce what we amended. Then come, then come on Thursday, we gonna amend it. And now when it come Thursday, now we gotta talk about the particular line items that we are amending.
Ma'am, what, one question.
Mr. Law?
The budget, after we get it, is that in concrete, can we amend the budget as the year progresses?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, I I I just wanna make sure we have that, it's not a department thing, but it can be amended throughout the year.
Yes, sir, you're correct. Mr. Law?
But now, what we have to present.
And that, that raise, uh, is inclusive of all employees with the exception of elected officials?
Ma'am, is that raise gonna include people that already got a raise in the last year? You gonna give them another raise on top of the raise that they already got?
But the request here was for two, wait, just, just wait, just let me finish. It was our understanding that that was the request.
We, I guess what I'm saying is, we, we do things for common sense. You, the goal was to up the bottom pay and to give everybody a fair deal. Now, you know, you know, if person got four dollar raise here and you give them another two dollar raise, you just gonna create a bid. We just want what's fair based across the board. And we went back and said do a two dollar, I thought y'all was gonna do an element of the two dollar deal. Because what we don't wanna do is come back and just say, give everybody a two dollar raise, because the mayor, if she wants to give people public work a raise, she could have been, still giving them a raise.
My, my question, Miss Andrew, maybe you can answer that for me.
Mr. Dee Green?
Okay, this, can you grab your, can you go to like the, can you go to recreation expense, just, just, I, for example? So when I get home, I can do my own calculation. Okay. For, for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, you budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for salaries, right? We only utilized a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, right? So that's a, that's, that's almost the difference of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give or take a couple dollars, right? Surplus. So now we going into the twenty-four, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we budgeted twenty-nine, two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And here's my, here's my question. Twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, you took over a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus. And now you taking up the budget two hundred and ninety-one to two hundred and ninety-one thousand, when you just previous had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus. Hence, why I asked last meeting, we taking over these hundred thousand dollar surplus, you, we can't get a, we can't give a raise within that surplus?
You can, but what I'm saying is that, that money there is one-time money, but your surplus is in this, this amended budget where it's got, um, six, six million there at the end?
No, I'm, no, I'm talking about the, for like of line items, for, for better understanding.
Ma'am, you can give a raise if you want to, it's just.
What he's, what he's getting at, you go back the last couple of years, two, three years. They, you, you budget one thing, but they only use X amount, and you have surplus that goes back into the general fund. What he's saying is, if you compute the raises, won't that offset and still you just giving us an astronomical figure that's just going way up?
Yeah, so you're adjusting the budget by forty thousand dollars.
When you adopt a budget, that is projected, revenue and expenses, you don't know for sure that you're gonna be able to stay in that line. That's the purpose of the legislature audit, which you must amend the budget. You gotta amend the budget so you save what's left over to carry on for the next year.
I agree, but on certain lines.
Anything can happen, so it's projected.
Salaries, because if you, if you budgeting, how many, just for, just for parking, recreation, how many slots you budgeting for the parking, recreation?
I don't have those numbers right here.
See, you say once, see, can I have those numbers? And that way I can get them a better understanding, because when you, by looking at it, I can, I can tell what's going on if I know how you budgeting, because the reason I'm asking is, right, just follow me. So if you budgeted, for example, last year for twenty slots, right, but we only utilized ten slots, so that, I'm, just following you. So there's ten slots over. So what I'm saying is, within that ten slot over, what we, what we normally would pay ten full-time employees, you can take that, that money there and and give raises. And also too, you got, you got, also too, hire a couple people. So that's why I'm asking, so now when I see that we over budgeting based on how many slots we budget for, now we increase the budget by forty thousand dollars, and I wanna know why.
Well, and that's particular problem, uh, problem here, we might have had a full time, but then we, we might have used work release, but you don't have benefits. So, either whatever, uh, that wants me to do, obviously, to help you any way I can.
Well, it's, I, I think what he's saying is, because I, I follow the budget also and I look back at last year's budget. And you go back a year before. What he's saying, you have, just like you budgeted nine hundred thousand. Just rough, you don't use the six hundred, that's three hundred thousand. So if you do that over the last couple of years, that's about six hundred thousand roughly, that you keep, that you keep moving on. What he's saying is, if you gonna give a two hundred, a two dollar raise and it's not gonna cost you but a hundred and twenty thousand, and you giving back three hundred thousand, why would it, why would it, why would, why would it increase? Why would you increase what they getting because they not already using it? You just keep going up and up and up when it's, the money's already there. You creating, it's like you creating a, a deficit.
Well, I, I don't have the party to get raises, I'm just a mayor and don't have the party.
I was, I, I had to, I had to.
She was trying to answer you.
You gotta get the point, information first, man. You came up the wrong way when I'm speaking.
She was trying to answer you.
Go ahead, Miss Andrew.
No, I'm, I'm.
I'm, 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 I'm not finished, I'm not finished.
Mr. Green?
I'm, I'm.
Dee Green?
So, so the last meeting, we discussed the, the surplus that we normally take from salaries, Miss Andrew. So I, and I get that the mayor told you to budget as, because throwing these numbers out, that will bust your budget out, like bust, bust over the budget, right? But you don't have to. You don't have to, because, because it, it, just like for the police department, right? When you say you budget for twenty-five, just even.
Forty-five.
Twenty-five new slots. So even when we was here with chief, I wish he was here, he was asking for four more police officers. He was asking to get back to the twenty-five police officers. So, so, so each department, which Mr. Bradford said, is vital, because if we gonna budget for thirty, uh, thirty city workers, but they only have six now. The only thing they asking for is five or six more, and we still over budgeting?
I think that's the question.
Dee, what I did was, we took the employees that we had on staff, what they made, and I got with every department and they told me their budget, their vacancies and what those rates was gonna be.
Oh, okay.
And I, I budgeted for those individual slots with their benefits and everything.
Yes.
Per person. And that's how I come up with the budget for this year.
Okay, Ms. Goldman?
Uh, Miss Tapp?
I don't, I don't wanna bust the budget, you know. So I think probably what we need to do, just like my recommendation about that audit expense, drop it back to the original amount, forty-five thousand dollars. We can go through each line item and cut something, well, not all, but some. We can cut in some areas, that way we will not, our budget will not reflect a negative or in the whole budget. So things like that, twenty thousand dollars, that'll be top, our benefit. So, um, that's one change that I, I definitely know I want on the budget.
Okay, I'm gonna say something. When, um, a bunch of questions, a hurdle that misses Goldman at one time, then I pause to give her an opportunity to answer that question without throwing a whole bunch of questions at one time and expect her to recall which answer. So it was not a matter of mine not protecting the speaker that was speaking. Mr. Jay Green?
Ma'am?
Yes, sir, Mr. No, Mr. Jay Green. Okay. Will you finish, Mrs. Tapp?
Yeah, so I mean, just like that change.
So, Ms. Moore, you said the audit expense, okay, you wanna go to what?
Back to the original amount, forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Well, that's what we spent. We budgeted sixty-five.
Okay, well.
So you want me to go to forty-five thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
And that'll be, that'll be something, that'll be something we have to amend. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mrs. Tapp.
I, well, since it hasn't been adopted yet, we don't have to amend it yet.
We're not amending this year's, but this coming, the twenty-four year, you had adopted it.
That's why I asked, last year, did, did you spend sixty-five thousand for the audit?
No, you, we budgeted sixty-five and we, we spent forty-five thousand.
Last year?
Yes, sir. It's on, it's on, it's on your, if the first column is what we budgeted and the second column is what we actually spent.
I know that. Yeah, but I didn't know which, I didn't know when I heard you say she, she gonna.
Well, I'm just saying, put it back to the original amount, forty-five thousand dollars, that'd be twenty thousand dollars.
So, so the original price is forty-five thousand. So last year, you, you budgeted for sixty thousand?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. We only paid her how much?
We paid her forty-five.
So this year, you, you project, you looking to pay her sixty thousand?
I don't know yet. Yeah, I mean, I, I was budgeting sixty-five, because that's what we had last year, but, um, but we only spent forty-five thousand.
But so she, has she requested sixty thousand now?
Well, it depends on how much detail their audit was. And that particular year that we paid for, they made a lot of extra stuff.
I still say stay at forty-five. If we have to amend something, that role we can't.
Okay.
Does she, does she request a raise? Does she request an increase or is it just on the city?
I haven't got it. I don't, I don't know, no.
I think that's the question, that the amount of money that was spent on last year, it looks like we are over budgeting and it's kind of doing everything.
Well, one reason why we did that, because we were behind on the year before that, remember?
Okay, yeah.
And so we didn't know what, how fast she's gonna get into the next year budget to finish it, because it was held up.
I mean, I, I, I mean, being, being.
Mr. Green?
Mr.
So it could have hit, and, you know, more money could have hit.
I, I get kind of how you guys been budgeting, but all I'm saying now, even with the police department salary, like from, based on previous years, you, you budget the same amount, you budgeting out, even with breaking up with five shifts. So what you doing now is exactly what I'm asking you guys to do with every department. You utilizing the money that you was already budgeting for. That's all we've been asking, the same.
Jay Green, last meeting. Ms. Jay Green, last meeting, you asked if we maybe gets, after the meeting talk, and that didn't happen. So I'm I'm, I, you know pretty much where I'm at. Y'all been always called, that y'all wait to hear, and then y'all, y'all want all my stuff here, and I'm.
Well, also too.
I'm always available, and I always get to talk.
See, here's the thing, though, we all represent our district, so.
I agree, I agree.
And we we, if there's some things we need to have, we should have to come to you to get it.
Well, you can call me, and I'll have it for you. Now, the contracts, they're drawers full, and I have to go through them and pull them and make copies.
Well, you, we just want the ones that's gonna cause us to amend that budget, you don't have to.
I don't know all the ones that's for the budget, that can hap- that can happen anytime. But I'll give you, he's in there in the field for two years, I can do that, but I still gotta go through them all and look at the dates and hold them.
What are we talking about?
Mr. Jay Green, were you trying to say something, Mr. Jay Green?
Oh, yes. Thank, when we talk about over budgeting, the department, see what, when you look at these numbers. When you over budgeting for each department, it's still city money, it's gonna be there. When you over budget each department, it's like tying the money up where you can't be used because it's been allocated for. When you put it over here, you put it over there, and you got way too much money over there. When you can lower it back down, because the money's still gonna be i- in the general fund, the only thing different is. You gotta come back before the city council and ask them to, right, am I right? So that's what I'm saying, you can streamline it, and the money's still there, only difference is, you gotta come back before the board. To spend the rest of the money, that's the only thing I'm saying is, when you look at these.
And we do that.
Yes, ma'am, I'm saying, when you look at these numbers, that's what Mr. Green is saying, you, they astronomical, bring them back down, because the money's not going nowhere. It's gonna go into the general fund, and if they fall short, then you can come back before the board. But as it look like now, it's look like you in the red, but and then again, you're not gonna be in the red, because they more likely gonna turn the money back in. So what I'm saying is, streamline, I mean, break it down, just follow what you have, because the money's still there, and if they fall short. You can always come before the council and get the money, but cause if we ain't look now, it just look like, wow.
Well, I I can't say this. You do wanna over budget, but not as much as you guys over budget, cause you wanna you wanna have cushion room. I I'm not, I, me, I'm saying is.
That's what I said.
I'm sorry.
Make 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 it plain, man, I'm not talking about streamline, you know what I'm saying? I'm saying, get back to a reasonable number, cause you are extremely high, you know you gotta have cushion, you all know that.
Utilize that that cushion to.
And and if you do go short, it's not like it's not there, the money's still there, you still can come before the board and get it, right, Ms. Taffin?
But now, most of that in salaries, we have never been as short in fire and police. Fire, we've never been as short as we've been in the three years. I don't know if the chief is still here, yes, the fire chief is still here. We've never been, it used to be, we had a waiting list, wait for the hire, we don't have that now. And if I have, we have to stop and come on that for salaries to amend the budget, we can do it. But when they're ready to come to work, and we ready to do physicals and all that, y'all want us to wait on that too. Because the salaries, and the chief and Jake, they went over that with me, over and over and over and over. It ain't a lot of cushions in that. In the salaries and benefits.
For the fire department.
With the fire department, it's gonna be there if we don't hire the eight people he's looking, I don't I don't know if he's eight, six, or what now.
Fire department totally different from all the other departments already.
They're short too.
I'm just saying, but they, when you calculate this stuff.
Let's let's do one at a time, Mr. James Green, let me announce the speaker, and that way I can protect the speaker that's speaking, Mr. James Green.
Okay, well, fire department, from what I've been told, from the manner run the fire department, it's calculated different from all the departments.
Their salaries is zero.
Right, that that's what we speak, you do, we speaking about salaries. So it it's computed different, differently from all the other departments. So when you say go back and redo them, when you start looking at these numbers for salaries, um. When you start looking at the different salaries, only thing you really might be concerned about is the, is the fire department, but the rest of them, when you budget it. When you budget the salaries, you can look at what you spent last year versus what you got budgeted this year, there's no way you gonna come close to going over.
Who did I hear next, Mr. uh Jay Green?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Bravon.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Goldman, on page six. I know you don't have a number, you can turn it from, I got them, I think it's the sixth page here. You got, we got beautification expenses, five hundred dollars.
Yes, sir, I had two hundred, so y'all wanted to up it, so I asked the mayor, and she said five hundred. I don't know what y'all planning on doing, but.
Oh, okay, uh.
I did.
Okay, I'm gonna go on down further, we'd like to go up on that five hundred, but I'm I'm still, I spoke earlier about the miscellaneous. That fifty thousand dollars, I see it skillet here at forty five thousand dollars, and Mr. Green was saying, we don't need to blow the budget up. And the money, you know, cause we have it, and have it looking like we're in the red, what what is the forty five thousand Mr. Green in front of?
Well, I can break it down to you Thursday, I don't have a list of what we paid for that with me, but we definitely did.
Well, why we pay, I I just knew it, I'm just saying, is that necessary?
Well, it is, because it's as, it's a one-time thing, and there's a lot of line on that 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 should go in there. So even though, even when you do a budget and you spend it, and say, say a department. Say, say my department, oh one, and I say, oh, I want, I really need this chair, it's broke. I'm low on this office line, I just put it in materials and supplies. Okay, well, when you did the budget next year, your true accounts are not really how you spend it. So you should leave it in the category is, even though you may go over. On that particular line item, your overall budget is in compliance. And you are really spending where you need it, so next year, you have a true budget of what the categories you need the budget for.
Only only if you gonna, only if you gonna base it off what you actually utilize.
Right, you you should, you should, you should use it on how you use it, no.
See, that's that, that's the thing, that's, normally, this would take place, but here, how this, how the budget been going here lately. You guys don't utilize, you it it's not basically around what you utilize, I guess it's basically around how many slots y'all can budget for. Eh eh it look like, because if if it was, like I said, with parking reg, it would have been, this year it would have been budgeted down instead of up.
Well, I just come out with the department says, well, I need these vacancies, I I I. I I'm not out there with them, so I don't know.
Again, I I understand what you're saying, but but would you take into consideration to maybe move some of that forty five thousand dollars into beautification? Five hundred dollars is not gonna get it where our city look.
So what do you want me to change that to?
Wouldn't you put five thousand dollars in beautification?
Okay, and and five thousand, just kind of things will we be buying, I'm just curious.
We could be, uh, we could be cleaning the side, don't please don't get me started, what we could be doing.
No, I'm just. Because if they're, if it's doing the sidewalk, we pay labor to do that.
Okay, if they're doing what is done, I mean, I won't get into that back and forth, and we have money to clean the sidewalk and do all the things that. I'll say, why haven't it been done? I mean, I I I I mean, it's like beautification.
Cause it, cause the sidewalks are being the street, the wall.
Our landscaping for the city in our front. Well, I we can use it for landscaping in our front, I would, we we our appearance to the people, when they come into our community, gonna have to be up to par. And right now, we we looking like, I don't know what we're looking like, but we don't have a uh. Flower bed clean, or anything beautifying, I buy the, um, I hear by, well, John M. Marier. Have the pit for driving, so we need to beautify. I mean, I think we talked about lighting in the front, you say you ordered the lights, they still not did them, that was three weeks ago, a month ago, we talked about that. Well, those are type of little thing, you know, first, you know, we, and we need money, we need to do it now. You know, that's what I'm saying, there's some beautification, and I think we got the raises, I think five and everybody going in the right direction for their raises, and. And, you know, like you said, we can always go back and mend, we need to get on past it and go back and mend. But then we need to get in, talk about our contracts and department heads and all that stuff, and I think we. Maybe that somebody else got something to say about this particular budget, huh?
I have one more question.
Ms. Taffin.
Is the miscellaneous, um, fund where we pay vendors out of?
Well, it is paying vendors out of it, it's it's it's, it may be, I'll just, I'll just flicking copies of it.
Okay, one more thing, um.
But I'm gonna move five thousand to the beautification.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Goldman, uh, let me. And moving five thousand, there's also a restriction on what we can purchase in, um, in certain categories, so. Also, we need to, um, to have a list of what can be purchased. I brought some some things, because we had an event going on, and I checked with the auditor, I checked. Everywhere that I needed to check, to make sure that that was a proper expenditure, so just saying that. Put five thousand, ten thousand, we need to know that we are spending it appropriately, so also with that, I think that.
Well, only you budget, you budget for, you budget for, I think, four thousand, if I'm not mistaken, then a one thousand for, uh. What's those things called, I forgot, a vending machine. Or you know, longer need that that budget money, you can put it, you can use that five thousand, you won't miss it.
Ms. Goldman will have a list of things that's appropriate to purchase, we can't just purchase, there are there are restrictions.
Um, what, I thought, what about contracting services out right now for, um, grass cutting? Since our staff is so short, and until we can get some people hired, just to kind of boost the appearance of that, but contracting those services out. Could we advertise on the?
Well, I I did, I did contact, but just because I was checking on some tractors that we've had orders since November. Uh, to see if they had some at least to get it done, and, um, they said, no, they don't have anything leased. Ever, this is the leasing season, and they leased, you know, they're already out, so. My thought was, if we could get some, then how long would they, uh, want to be leased for? Because we've got tractors ordered, they're just not in, so, uh, but they, that person said, no, they didn't have anything.
Okay, I'm talking about like a company to come in and do the maintenance for the grass cutting. We we probably need to contract those services out, until we can get equipment and staff.
I I I recommend it also, I suppose.
I agree, I agree.
Because we can't keep telling our district, that we gonna wait, cause it's been a while, they keep coming saying, well, I can grab that. We keep giving them moving dates, and I just found out today that the tractor's not gonna be in the December. You think we gonna be able to tell the district that we not gonna move none of this off?
I I walked my district, and I asked questions, and she said, what you came up and asked me a question for, you wanna do that?
We understand the tractor's gonna not coming in December, but our people don't wanna hear that, they 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 need something done, they need some relief. I mean, you snakes, grass, everywhere, that that that's that's totally unacceptable, and at least we can show them that we trying to do something. But I just keep telling them, hey, it'll be in, we'll move it next year, that that that's not gonna work. And we've been talking about this for last month and a half, or so, when everybody keeps saying, well, we gonna solve the problem. And the problem ain't been solved, in December, you ain't gonna need a tractor. So I'm, my suggestion is that we go out and we try to find somebody, because you you advertising somebody or or mowing grass. I mean, you can't look at the price, cause it's kind of our fault, we just gotta get it done. If you get it down, I'm sure park recreational, or public works or whatever, once you get it cut, they spray it. So you probably have to get it cooked once or twice, but the problem is, it's gotta be done, we we can't just prolong, keep prolonging and keep putting it off, and. People, that that that's not acceptable, my answer.
Okay, I got another question.
Hold just a minute, Mr. Jay Green. Ms. Goldman, okay, you're gonna look up what can be purchased. What that's, what is appropriate, number two, uh, in, um, contracting out for mowers, or. We need to to make sure of insurance, adequate insurance, if we're gonna have someone, let's, uh, make a list of. What we need to do to contract that out, and if, um, because it's gonna be more than. Just getting somebody to get a lawn mower and start mowing, because if somebody throws a rock, breaks something, then we become liable, so let's check.
They they come with their own insurance.
That's what I'm saying, let's make sure they have a property, that they abundant, if they have a bond to cover. Uh, liability opposed to the city of over that.
I agree, I agree.
As we do with any other, um, contracted service, you make sure they have certain, meet certain requirements, okay, who wants to speak?
I did, I did.
I think I heard, Mr. Jay Green.
Ms. Angie, can you, can you tell me, uh, the Morehouse Humane Society, I I I don't know. The Morehouse Humane Society, you know, y'all budgeted for twenty one thousand, then, y'all utilized twenty one thousand, is that the money the city give to it all?
Yes, sir, years ago, many, many years ago, it used to be like three thousand, and it kinda got, it's gone up and up and up. So what they do is, they do pay for some labor out there, that, um, but then we have one full-time down there. And then we have an animal control officer that picks it up, and sometimes they helps out there. But the rest of the employees, they pay out there, they do have some volunteers that's not paid, but then. The payment itself belongs to us, so we have the utilities, and we have the upkeep of that.
So that's twenty one thousand.
That's twenty one thousand, we done that, and then they pay their, their health. And then we buy dog food, yeah, we buy some dog food.
On those, on those lawn care, make sure we start with our local people first. Yes, sir. Get somebody gonna do it, make sure he's start with that local.
Yes, sir.
Eric, can we, um, this is just discussion, so we, a lot of things we've been doing, we've been talking, but we ain't made no motion. Do we have to make a motion and get a second, to make sure that this, this is followed through upon the leasing after lawn mowers? Because if we don't, it's just talking, we need some conflagration done.
Okay, since you posed that question directly to me, this this meeting was for discussion only, was not to take any action. And what was advertised, it was discussion.
Okay, we'll do it next week.
And Mr. uh, Mr. Bravon.
On page number eight, I'm gonna be counting to eight, page number eight there. Uh, I I heard we all said something about purchasing, we have a purchasing department, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, how many employees we have?
Two.
How many?
Two.
Two, and uh, seventy thousand dollars you got budgeted for, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, down to the very bottom, before you put the total there, say the department charges another twenty thousand dollars, what what, I could just.
Well, that that's where we buy our stock, we have a storeroom, and we buy and book and keep it there. And some of it's office supplies, some of it's cleaning supplies, and some of it's automotive depicts vehicles. So when you have that, then they come in and sort of go in here and there, pick it up, they go to the storeroom. And it's charged to the department, they sign for it, and then then we get, then at the end of the month. I get the money from the part, uh, each department, they pay back the purchasing department for that stock.
Okay, but that's still, right here, it says office expenses, four thousand dollars, and then it say twenty thousand dollars office charge, office charge. I'm trying to figure out, how how is that working, because. I know, in the future, since we're talking about purchasing, in 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 the future, uh, the purchasing department. We have our bills and claims, regardless of it, I guess that's a late, I haven't met a person on, they be talking on the microphone. She never produce the invoice on anything that she does. I think that's something we, like I said, we're just discussing, we think it's gonna be, I think it would be more check and balance and play. If we would, uh, have a produce those invoices, because that's the only way we know in the future. Where we can cut some, you know, custom things, we we don't need five bags of dog food, and we can get back with folk. And maybe some employee walking off with one, and the department head don't know, you know what I mean, we we got, we gotta kind of itemize or something we can get within our limb. You still getting up, but now if the finance committee have a. Have those invoices, and see that we bought five bags of dog food in October. And, 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 and come, uh, November, we buying ten bags of dog food, and they disappeared? Uh, 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 do we have invoice, other way we don't have any checking balance, that, that purchasing agent, whoever was on stability is. Should, and when we come to our finance committee meeting, we should have an invoice. A purchase, whoever gave the order to purchase, and we, we just no checking, we don't know what they buying. We don't know what's going out, other way, we don't know what's going out of our house, and I think we could be more accountable. Because these are public dollars we're spending to our citizens, and we can know where that money going for a dog bag. I mean, because for me to come in the financial committee meeting, you give me a list of stuff, itemize number one to four hundred, and, uh. No invoice, no checking, I could not assign them to it, I think, I know the city used to have. What we used to have, at one time, our purchasing agent couldn't purchase anything, we couldn't purchase anything, and she went to the purchasing agent department, I don't know who buying now. Like everybody got the power to buy, but we need to, our purchasing, we got a purchasing agent department, that's what, uh. She needs to issue a purchase order, that purchase order should be, with, when we do our bills and claim once a month. That purchase order should be there, that invoice should be there, and we gotta know, see if we, are we getting all our dog, all our bags of dogs? You still get that, we, we, if we get, our, our paper, are we, we buying cases of paper? Are we getting, are somebody walking out of the city hall with paper, I'm not saying here, uh, so, uh, we got, uh, fire hose we buying? Is somebody taking fire hose home, is somebody taking ashes home, we, we, other way, we gotta itemize and, and be more accountable to the people. And I think that, that, that checking balance, purchase order, invoice. Somebody will say, purchase order, invoice, and we don't think.
And she has requisition from the department.
Right, and that, that person should, when we come to.
As a department head.
Yeah, 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 when we come to bill, when we come to bill and claim, when we come to bill and claim, those invoices should be right there. When we have our meet, our financial meet each month, because that way, that's.
Okay, are you asking us to make copies from her, yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, man, that's a lot.
Well, that's okay, it, it, it's, we run, we run eighteen million dollar budgets. Eighteen million dollars we going through, it, it takes a lot, we're gonna have to come up with a system to make it, but we can do check and balance. I don't feel good signing on, uh, I don't think we passed the last financial, uh, bills and claims, since I, I don't think we passed ones that we've been here completely. And, uh, I know they've been paid, see, that's unauthorized, that's walking over the council, that's another subject, we gonna get past that, we, we're looking forward, okay? I'm not looking for the past, I'm gonna discuss the future, what make balance a, a better city, what make us more accountable to our taxpayers. And that's what we gotta go from here, so, if it keep continue to go like this, if we can't get it together. The state gonna come in and do it, again, I asked that meet, I keep, what's our ratio, what's the condition of balance, what, what is our financial ratio? What is our condition as a city, nobody answered that yet, but anyway, we gonna get past that, we gonna tie that up. That'll come back up again, I'm sure, uh, soon if we don't hurry up and straighten up our act, I really think that we need to change our system. Back to, I think it was like this years ago, way back years ago, that purchasing agent should provide, that financial committee. The order and the invoice, and we can itemize that invoice, and say, okay, we got ten bags of dog food, and that's what we got by the money. We don't want nobody walking off with office supplies, we budget, you know, everything up to eighteen, all they count. You wanna run an operation, everything count, and then if we make, we may have a million dollar overseas.
Uh, Mrs. Tapp?
Miss Dolan, so you think you're ready to have those contracts when our patents are due there?
Try my best, okay.
Little thing, um.
Mr. Green?
We found to the information about attorney, vendors, and all this, because we, we won't get sidetracked.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's it right there.
This for Mr. Green?
They were talking about vendors.
I didn't get it, did you, man?
Of the world, we talking about, are we talking about business, contracts, little people?
Okay, number five, okay, before we move to item number six. Let me just say this for information only, because the Budget Act has mechanisms in place under which we operate. Let's say, and this is for an example, and we're gonna move on, if you predict or forecast. That your electric bill is going to be two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's what was budgeted. Fuel adjustment cost goes up, and you end up paying, actually. Having a debt of three hundred thousand dollars for annual electric bill. So, you only budgeted two hundred fifty thousand, at the end of the year, you paid three hundred thousand, so you go back and you align the budget to match. What was forecasted, and what actually happened, that's all that.
That's legitimate, man, like, the light bill, if, if you pay for a light bill, you budgeted two hundred fifty thousand dollars for your light bill, and you end up paying three hundred thousand dollars, that's legitimate.
That's.
Going to get into a contract that wasn't budgeted without our consent, that's not legitimate.
Okay. Okay, I will give an example of, of, of why, you know, being the budget.
But, you know, sometimes we, I, I, you, you put them examples out there, then we have to speak on and defend ourselves, some of them act like we don't know how to do our jobs.
I'm not, it's absolutely.
I'm not saying you here, I'm just saying people, so we.
Okay.
It was just a rebuttal.
Okay.
And that's one, what, what we at by amendment, last.
Okay, did everyone have an opportunity to speak on number five? Okay, all right, well, we'll move to item number six, excuse me, Mr. D Green, is it something you want to say? Okay, well, that will take us to number six, discussion, information related to attorneys, vendors, auditors. Financial advisors, et cetera.
We, we can't discuss it without pro- proper documentation, so we can just play it like this, you have some?
Yeah, I have something, uh. With attorney pay, uh. Mr. Jones has receipts here, we're here to see almost twenty-four thousand dollars, Mr. Jones have almost received twenty-four thousand dollars. From, I think, January, January to July this year, for his services. Did I have Mrs. Reese's receipt from Mrs. Reese's services? She received almost close to seventy-eight thousand dollars. Uh, my, to come to attorneys, and we're not gonna, when, when this attorney, I think. The board should have, according to the charter, the authorization to approve the mayor appointment. That's where the charter read, we should conduct ourselves according to the charter. Uh, we need to, I think that we need to come up with some solution. For these, hiring these attorneys, uh. So, we can move forward, I, I, I really feel that anytime the mayor. Violate the charter, that's disrespect to the council, and we want to be respectable to the county, to the mayor. And we ask for the same respect, now, attorney, we know we coming up, is appointment gonna be on Thursday evening, or?
It's on the agenda.
Are it gonna be on the agenda, appointing, popping heads and attorneys and everybody? Who are we gonna appoint, who, who, what's on the agenda?
It's the, um, it's the city clerk, assistant clerk, the, um, the auditor. The two representatives, the sales tax, the city attorneys, and. Make, uh, finance chairman.
Okay, attorney, okay, well, I'm gonna stay with attorney, and about attorneys, because I don't feel, we getting our money wrong. Uh, I think we could do better with a staff attorney, I still say that, they say, oh, that's big city stuff, well, if you get a staff attorney. And he kinda align his staff, I get him another assistant attorney, and, uh, and a, and a clerk secretary. I think we could be more efficient in serving our community, we got a lot of issues, uh, with abandoned prop- property that we have no need to advise on. Uh, the mayor is not an attorney, the mayor should, he gave a sign on contract, but that's the attorney signed on with her. That mean, he, he insured this body, that what we sign on to is legally. And, 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 that way, that keep, uh, keep the mayor out of hot water, because a lot of things I see, oh, I seen them in my, my short time here. A lot of stuff signed on contracts and remember regular agreements, they're not, I, I, I don't know, she needed attorney. And, and, and Mr. Kyle did too, not just you, I'm not picking at you, our mayor needed attorney right there on, on, on the scene, okay? Because, uh, we need a staff attorney, and I hope, uh, there's two attorneys that's here now. Uh, I hope that they take into consideration, maybe talk to with the mayor or something before they come, come out of the. Uh, I, I, they hear every, every, I guess you won't keep out of the, but we need to come up with some. Program, I mean, some office program, make room for you on the side of the court, so you can be available to the city government. To Ms. Goldman, to the chief, to especially the enforcement, oh, co, oh, we, you know, when you go, they talk about how complicated it is to get rid of this property. But we got attorney, he can tell us what we need to do legally, without waiting for, we got, we got, we got the weekend, we get after year after year after year. See, we, 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 we need to take some quick action, I hope whoever the mayor bring for the attorney, that they can come before this council. And give us a outline, a highly would like to be, and give us a price, you know, what we write you the budget to. That, you know, that what it take to run a, a staff attorney, yourself, your assistant, and your secretary. And your office and stuff, whatever, it consists of, like any other department, what I'm trying to say, I think it'd be more effective for this community. We can get legal advice, we can get around some of the people hiding and won't take their service papers, you know, and, 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 and the house still, still, uh, falling down. They in California do it in very year, the master, I look like, I don't know what, that's what I want to hear about, that's my opinion on attorneys. I mean, that's, that's what I hope, the mayor, whoever she decides to appoint, uh, bring before this board, I hope they consider, say, hey, I can provide this city. As a staff attorney, for certain amount of dollars, I need assistance and a secretary, whoever, I already, I didn't wanna do. You all can work out the court proceeding, who gonna handle prosecution, you know, both can handle, if you out, me out, he out, you know, work together, you, whoever the staff attorney gonna be. I'm not pointing, I'm just making a suggestion, this conversation, that's what I'm thinking, what I seen over the past, and I think we can be more effective. I know the code enforcement would love it, because he, he can't, he can't really move, you know, he, he, he can't really do it, they, they don't know what legal is to do. But attorney can research, and, and get him legal advice, and, and, and when we come up to signing off contracts. We won't be getting the contract, people tells us, they, they gonna do this for a certain amount of dollars, again, we owe our budget. That long you can see that and, and put it in word, it, well, that's the buck stopped there, and, and that's what, that's all we need, that someone, you know, to, uh. Over six, and, and one other thing, and I, I, I'm, I'm passing on, that two dollar raise across the board, that do include, include the marshal's department too, right?
It's all departments.
All department, okay, I just wanna, I live in my.
Electric officials, it includes all. Mr. D Green?
I think this is just a discussion, so, uh.
Mr. Green?
I'm just looking at the attorney, some discussion related to the attorney, so just.
Yes, sir.
We gonna, they already asked, what's we gonna vote on Thursday?
Yes, sir. Why, yes, sir.
Okay, we, we gonna vote on two attorneys on Thursday, right?
Yes, sir.
You know, they gonna be, um, it's just gonna be a journal, you gonna, we gonna, you know, you gonna provide us with the name that you going.
Yes, sir. Give you something blind.
Some, somewhere, their, their previous situation, it don't have anything to do with now when they appoint.
Any questions down to my right? Mr. Tapp? Okay, are we ready to go to, uh, number seven?
Excuse me, quick, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
The, the vendors and audit, are they gonna be discussed later, you gonna get that information, for, for understanding, right?
The vendors, you don't have the contracts?
Yes, that's what the audit is and the financial advisor, all, all, what, what it all?
They have any, that, that, we did not pay any financial advisors, that line item was budgeted ten thousand, we didn't spend any money for.
Okay, great, and, and on that audit, uh, that, that gonna be taken care, you, you gonna make a shift.
He asked me to move it to forty-five thousand.
The vendors we cover, and we're gonna pay the advisor, and et cetera. I'm gonna leave it alone.
So, did he, will be some more changes in what I give you a while ago?
You, you say one?
You, yes, but changes, I'm gonna make the changes that y'all discussed tonight, so it will be different.
That will be for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, are we finished with? Number seven, papers made to come into, into Young City.
So, we will have that, that documentation for the.
Come up with the contracts?
Right, because, uh, right now, it's pretty much everything been discussed, we don't have.
I'm trying to get the, the contracts, I'm trying to get them.
I, I, yeah, that's why I was. Any, any, any contract particular that we? Well, yeah, we, we do, we need, we need a lawyer contract, we need that contract.
Yeah, we need a lawyer.
Wherever, wherever, what?
I have no, I told you, I have no contracts for lawyers, none, that's why I gave inch, the.
However, however the city when it endeavors with Mr. Jones, we, we need that documentation.
The documentation with that invoice.
Uh, go ahead, it's perfect.
Uh, we gonna get, uh, we got a contract with the attorney, so we just not put them in the budget and pay, or you don't have a contract? You, Mr. Pierre, yeah, I'm addressed, you, you attorney, you don't have a, a contract, uh, with the city manager?
The council approved me, the council confirmed me five years ago.
Years ago, did you get a contract or anything?
No, it's, it, it was.
Resolution.
It was by, uh, it was by resolution years ago.
By resolution years ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The resol, the resolution, I think stipulate.
What, what, what do you know, it's not whatever, it stipulate something.
I mean, it's.
Miss Dolan, did you get that resolution, you said?
How, how it is that we had, where they made appointment, appointed city attorney, the council baby?
Okay, well, what resolution?
Mister, Mister, uh, Pierre was ap- uh, appointed and confirmed as city prosecutor, he is an attorney. But he was confirmed as city prosecutor.
Okay, but.
In the, in the twenty, twenty-one.
We definitely did that wrong. I said, we definitely did that wrong. Appointing as prosecutor, because the, the charter states that we just appoint city attorneys.
Right.
And then, and then when you, then when you decide which role they take, we come again and make those, um. Yes, sir, I can understand, we, yeah, we definitely. If we appointed him as prosecution, then we definitely made a mistake.
The mayor makes the appointment, the, the council does the advice and consent.
Yeah, right, but, 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 I guess what, what you saying, Mayor, in the middle of the street, uh, if, uh. You gonna come in Thursday? you gonna come in Thursday, it may have to be put back. Wait, because I think we need a detail, a detail of who you gonna present. I mean, a, a point, you know, let it go like, uh, uh, Mr. Green just say, give us some name, so we can do our research. Maybe we might have a question to them that we can call and say, I don't, Brother Smith, I hear you offer a former, uh, what type of plan do you have for the city ambassador, I mean, what, 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 you know, what are your price? Or something like that, we don't need to appoint and don't know prices. Attorneys can be very expensive, we spent, uh, I said, oh, almost fifty thousand, we didn't have a forty-five thousand dollar budget I've seen for attorneys, and, and we just spent fifty thousand on the sideline. Because, you know, I mean, I don't know where you got the money from. Again, you that, you want us to go in a minute, in that twenty-two, twenty-two budget, when it ain't been authorized and been spent.
So, what's?
See, what I'm saying, let's come up front, let's be up front, but we know how, we, we can go for, at, at, now, if, uh, attorney, if attorney gonna be appointed, I mean, uh, presented for, presented to the, by the mayor, an appointed, and have to be approved by this council, we need to have details, uh, in description, other than just say attorney. You know, if, if, like I say, uh, that's why I suggest a staff attorney, and they work it out, you know, whoever come on, you know, we, in case they don't have the money, because I only see Mr. Pierre money, even budgeting, what you getting paid here, well, doesn't even, I have. And I call myself, I haven't seen nothing from you, Mr. Pierre, me too, which, I don't know, I'm, I'm not criticized, you were just saying, they go back to, we'll keep it again. I don't see nothing on Mr. Pierre, on, 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 have you seen anything? I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I, I don't know what, like, the line, it has to be coming out of the city's salaries, right?
Okay, well, I, I, I don't see anything, I don't see anything for the budget for the attorney either.
For the biggest, the one, I, I'm sorry.
Me, I'm just saying, let, let's start right, when we can do it right. And we do it right, we'll come out right, and I think that, I'm not, I'm not telling the mayor who to appoint, how to appoint, but at least take into consideration that they, we have to approve this appointment. You know, give us the respect and say, okay, why wouldn't you do, well, maybe we're uncomfortable with some issue. You know, maybe we're uncomfortable with some issue, and we'll give an attorney an opportunity to come before the council and, and, and present, you know, then I'll tell them what I'm uncomfortable with, and what I'm comfortable with. Uh, uh, I, I'm just one vote, but I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make my vote. I'm gonna tell what I'm comfortable with and what I'm uncomfortable with.
One, one comment for me, when we get ready, sorry, when we get ready to appoint these city attorneys, we just appoint city attorneys, and then you mayor have the right to delegate from roles. That's, that's what I'm supposed to say.
Report to the, the charter.
Yeah, but when we appoint, we just gonna appoint two city attorneys, and then you as mayor have the right to delegate.
The, the mayor makes the appointment, only the mayor can make the appointment, the council, advisor consent.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
Right, and, and that's what we were, that's exactly what we were saying about this situation with the particular, uh, attorney situation.
And there is also said that, uh, you have to prescribe his or her duties and fix the form and extent of his or her compensation.
Yes, sir, that is correct, Mr. Locke.
And what they gonna do, and, and, and how much the compensation, the compensation.
That's, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Locke, I agree, one hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. Locke, for bringing that to the forefront.
So, mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr..
So, we won't be no problem come Thursday. We done, we done went over how the process supposed to be. So, let's, when we come Thursday, it should be all settled, no more wrinkles and all of those stuff to set us back. We done discussed what we need to do, the council done set out parameters, you just set out what you said you gonna do, so we all in a clear agreement. So, if you come back, if, if we come back Thursday, and it ain't like what we discussed, we just gonna be pushed back further. And everybody had a microphone? And, and if we don't approve your appointment, please don't go around us and do it anyway. Give us the time, you know, to think about that, that is too much other, we don't, just keep walking.
Please. Grant? Appreciate your candor.
So, mayor.
The city has to follow.
Go ahead, Mr..
Item number seven, the, the contract?
Yes, sir.
Being that it, it's not a contract for Mr. Jones, then that payment for Mr. Jones, without the council consent, then who, who they follow?
Who has a copy of, uh, everything is listed that Mr. Jones, on that was, on his invoice, there's nothing on there that says he was illegal at five, not the right to say?
You stated opening and meeting.
I did, and I admitted that, I admitted that.
So, and so, without, without contract, without, without our evidence, or something to prepare for, for confirmation, what do we go about?
Okay, this.
How do, how do we, cause now we asked to approve a man's budget, which would be that payment?
Yes, sir.
So, now, when we, when we don't approve that line item, then how do we get, how, how do we re, get reimbursed for that money?
Reimbursed?
Yeah, because it, it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't, uh, approved, nor was his legitimate expense.
Well, I would disagree with that, because of the, the things that was facing. Not disagree with his person, but disagreeing with the fact that we had to have guide us through what we were dealing with. And, of course, I did say the word, you know, I said, I will never deny that his own record. But he was not paid as an, you know, he was paid as an advisor, and it's all listed.
But I, but he was paid out of line item legal fee additional. That's what line item he was paid, or I asked Ms. Andrew this last night, he was paid out of legal fee additional.
Okay.
Meaning that, I don't, I don't, vendors, whatever, he was paid out from legal service from this particular line item. So, and this, that particular line item budget was, um, overspent. So, that'd be something that we'll have to amend, and I don't think it's fair, when we got the, we got the attorney general approved, that we been waiting on. There states that the mayor didn't have no authority to appoint an interim attorney, so when we come to amend the budget, and that item, that particular, I'm telling you now, that particular line item, the council should not approve that amend item.
Okay, now, the, um.
So, that's why I asked you, when we don't approve that particular line item for that expense, who do it follow?
Well, let's, we can go back to, to the discussion of willful neglect to do. If the council refused to vote on an appointment, and the city's operating at a disadvantage, that there are laws that govern everything, and every law, we, we have a budget act law that we have to abide by.
I know about.
We have, we have lots of laws.
It's nowhere in the budget, nowhere in the budget act, American states, that you have the, that you have the right to, to create a expense without, for that particular position or vendor, without consent from the council.
Mr. Go, did we go over budget?
Are you, I, I know.
Budget, yeah, I, that's true, I mean, we did.
Are you?
Yeah, that line item, we did, the, the budget.
The overall budget was not affected.
See, right, the overall budget wasn't affected, cause we take so, so much, so much surplus from each item. Of course, it wasn't affected, but hence, that particular line item was affected. Maybe the overall budget wasn't, cause that's what you do when you amend the budget. You amend particular line items, hence why we in front of everybody asking, what line items are we gonna amend?
Okay.
That would be one particular line, hold on, mayor, let me talk.
All right.
That would be one particular line item that we would have to amend, and here we are, as this council body saying, hey, hold on, mayor, we didn't approve you, especially to, to, to make that payment from the legal, additional legal line item, nor did we go into a contract with Mr. Jones, and here we are, twenty-plus thousand dollars.
That protected the city.
Um, regardless how you spin, mayor, we talking about what's right and what's wrong.
Okay, so, I, I think.
So, I asked, I asked you, I asked you, the only thing I asked you is now, yeah, cause it, cause this, this what we about to be faced with. Now, for this particular line item, that we not gonna approve this particular line item that we amended, because by law, there was no right for that expense to take place.
Okay.
So, when we get to that place, we need, like, like Mr. Green said, we need to have everything order, so we could be on the same page. Cause by you doing it, you put us all off the same page.
Well, okay, well, Mr. Mr. Pierre was confirmed as prosecutor.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna do, I don't, I don't wanna do all that anymore. I don't, I, we only talking about, we not gonna open the door to create more conversation. We talking about, this is what everybody been wanting to know, the whole council, whether we said it or not, we wanna know. We been waiting on this attorney general opinion for probably four months.
Okay.
So, now that we got the attorney general opinion, we, we, we stated last, you made him an interim attorney, and all of a sudden, we hear the word vendor. With, and Mr. Taylor say he got paid out of legal fee, the legal fee line item, didn't, so that particular line item was budgeted sixteen thousand dollars. Now that, now we got, you guys meant twenty-some thousand dollars, so that's something that we would have to approve, that we okay with. The moment we approve that budget, that mean, that particular item, that's saying his spending, well, his spending was okay.
Yeah.
Okay, now, uh, Mr. Go, also, pull, pull all the, uh, records on Mr. Pierre, for the, um, pull all of that, with Mr. Pierre with the paper start.
Hold on, mayor, you're making, you're making this like, you, you say nothing, cause I'm still talking. You're making this like, we against Mr. Jones, we not. So, I'm, I'm not gonna let you open the door to say anything about Rodney, that Rodney was already approved by the board. So, Rodney been approved by us under your administration.
That's correct.
So, we not gonna discuss that, we only discuss that, we, and, okay, here we are, we don't have anything against Mr. Jones.
No.
As he sitting next to us, he should understand where we coming from as, uh, councils. What we seeing is, the twenty-some thousand dollars you spent, the expense right there from Mr. Jones, was not approved by this board. Now, here we are, we got, you want us to amend this budget for their expense, and that's not right.
That's one particular line item, the budget was.
Of course, mayor, when you amend the, when you amend the budget, you amend, uh, line items, you don't amend the charter, um, budget.
You're bringing everything in a line, but, Mr. Go, I'm gonna pull everything.
No, that's, 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 we getting off track.
I, I want to say something.
Robert Rule of Order is specifically designed to prevent what we doing there.
Okay.
So, we not gonna descend into chaos, right?
Right, right.
Now, we not gonna do one thing and then jump to another.
No.
Let, let's, let's, let's concentrate on issue hand. We gotta modify budget, right? Before we move forward, we gotta, we gotta modify budget. Do you want us to approve a budget? And the problem is, that I'm hearing, is that you said that by me changing the way I paid him and what I called him, and the council, okay, but you paid him out of legal fund, so therefore, it's still constant to him being paid as an attorney. But what you saying is, I didn't pay him as an attorney, I paid him as an advisor, but the problem is, you paid him out of the legal fund. So, the problem is, how can we get past that sticking point?
This is our next.
Okay, and, uh, that.
And you keep saying, and you, and you know, when you do stuff by resolution, it also says in there, you know, you, that it says that you know the mayor, you know, you make some critical decisions and all that stuff, when you do stuff by resolution. You got to read about what the resolution says also. But what they're saying is, you paid him out of what was a legal fund. So, you probably can change it, say this or that, but the reality of the matter is, once you appoint somebody in them, and then you revoke that, and then they still see him on the board, but let me finish, mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the problem is, he may be doing a vital service for the city. Nobody, nobody can just beat that, but what they saying is, okay, you trying to circumvent the council. You went around, you doing one thing, and now you calling him some, but the problem is, you paid him out of the legal fund that was set aside for attorneys.
Hence, hence why getting paid out of legal fund would also coincide with her saying that he's, she gonna appoint him an interim attorney. So, it, it, I, I, in that sense, I could see it come out of legal fund, but it's not, it wasn't right. It wasn't approved for her to do that.
So, my point is, what, what can we do to get past this point, because that's gonna be a big contention. Come Thursday, we not gonna move past that point, but I, you can see it, you can see the vibe of right here today.
Yes, sir, now, I think everyone has had an opportunity, and I want to make sure everybody had an opportunity to express themselves.
Yes, sir.
Now, let us not forget the fact that the attorney general's opinion also stated that there's a vacancy. It's talking about that, that seat is vacant, and it has been vacant since Mr. Smith resigned. Well, did anybody read that part?
But, what, what, by you saying that, mayor, what point did you make?
I, I made the point that.
We know, we, we know that, okay, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You missed, missed leave, you were then.
Well, when everyone is talking about that, yes, and I have admitted, yes, I said that it's recorded. But he was paid as an advisor, but I do want the record to reflect that the attorney general's opinion rendered that we had no attorney.
He said he was paying as advisor, these invoice say legal research.
That's right.
But, uh, uh, you, you, you getting anybody doing legal research, when he's not an attorney? You got somebody doing legal research, but the city ambassador's not an attorney, and you gonna call him a, but this invoice I have in my hand, both say legal research.
Um, Mr. Go.
Now, now, we just need to clear it up, mayor, I think you gotta, I think you gotta have it up, find the channel.
Please, don't, don't, don't insult my.
Okay, okay, excuse me, please. I think, okay, let me say, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me say it like this, I think we need to stop using words and name game and like, like the instance, we don't have a public work, uh, head, uh, department head. Now, you got Mr. Jake, calling him a, some type of project person. The, uh, the reason you are doing that, you're not fooling anybody, the reason city, oh, excuse me, reason city doing that, I'm not gonna talk. Reason city is doing that, because you're trying to get around, come before the council. All the property head has to be appointed, has to be appro, approved by the council. Seeing you, you getting these guys these titles, these names, you calling everything self-Jesus Christ. And I'm saying, and there ain't no time, I would stop, and let's go forward with it, cause we're not, we're not illiterate. We, we got comments, and, and, and we need to be, we trying to go forward.
I have a comment.
Uh, we don't hear, Ms. Tab.
Uh, I'm, I'm just tired of betraying to the public that we are willfully neglecting our duties. Um, every interview that's been given is like, we are not trying to move the city of Ashford forward. That has nothing to do with it. All we ever wanted was clarity, and if you can knock me for wanting clarity, do it. Because we have taken an oath too.
We have.
We have, all of us have, so we have to be stewards of the money. We have to be, and if we are inquisitive and have questions about this budget, we just want them answered.
Okay, and I asked them to the best of my ability, I respect, we all took an oath of office.
Yes, ma'am.
But we both, we each had, but you all got the same job description, I have a different job description.
Yes, ma'am, but we don't wanna be betrayed to the public like we not doing our jobs.
And I don't wanna be vilified for doing mine.
Well, I, I hadn't said anything there.
Let me say something, if, 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 do your job according to the charter, we will have this confusion.
Most definitely.
We, see, we, we got a charter to go by. When you break the charter and go around the council and do things like that, you're not doing your.
That's a strong.
You're creating, you're creating.
Before we get to the point of, of tacking someone's character, competency, you know, publicly.
We know, we know.
Okay, are we ready to adjourn this?
Yeah, let me have the joint, well.
I make a motion. I should, I should move this, actually.